Welcome, uh, welcome everybody to the Monday, October 7th, 2024 board meeting. At first, I'd like to do a roll call for attendance.
Hardikoff, present.
Man, sure.
Joyce, are you here? Can you hear us?
I am here. Hi, everyone.
Hi there.
All right. Sakoshia, so if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Onto agenda review and approval. I do have a couple of things for the board to add to appointments for, um, FERDA, uh, Shigashi, uh, for advisory budget committee alternative. And then under old business, we'll do B for NH DOT lease, uh, for 90125.
F and G?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, D and B.
Oh, sorry.
One under appointments. FERDA is under appointments.
Excellent.
Uh, for a first review and then an expanded DOT lease under old business, B.
Okay.
Good. Okay, um. Looking for motion?
Make a motion to approve the October 7th agenda as just adjusted.
Second. Roll call.
Hardikoff.
Man, sure. Sakoshia.
Campy LOI.
This brings us on to, uh, public comment. Please be courteous and respectful. If not, you'll be asked to leave. Public comment is, uh, up to 15 minutes long for three minutes at a time. So if there's anybody in studio or online that would like to come and make a public comment, uh, we do have the, um, drawdown, uh, for Mendums here tonight. That's going to be a part of it. So, and that's to come for questions. But if there's anybody else that would like to say a public comment or come on up, please do so.
Yeah, so to be clear, there'll be a separate public hearing for the drawdown of Mendums where you ask questions of the state as part of that public hearing. Um, but public comment for anybody, talk about anything.
Is there a second public comment for the other business?
Yes, at the end of the meeting.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, nobody in studio or online, so we're going to go ahead and close public comment. And that brings us up to public hearings and invited guests. Do we have our school board liaisons? Hello, hello?
Did you get that sweatshirt when they first came out?
I did.
Okay. Just curious.
It's the original, the first one.
Sorry. Boston Patriots.
All right, well, thank you for having me, um, and Rick here to present. Um, and so I'll start with the, we are following a meeting that we just had with our joint, uh, committee, so it's perfect timing. Um, and so the district will be joining the efforts that the town has where they write the, um, voter's guide. So the school will be working on writing and publishing their first school district voter's guide, but working very closely through that joint committee, um, on, on publishing that, um, for, as a coordinated effort. So we're excited about that. More information to come. Um, policy committee will be reviewing, um, the purchasing policy, um, as you, as you did, so that we can kind of reduce that bottlenecking for some of those vendors and that approval process. And good news is also timely, we meet next week. So more, uh, information can be shared from Deanna over to Connor. Um, and then in partnership between BES and the rec department, um, utilizing the new trail at BES on, uh, the Barrington Common for a pumpkin stroll, uh, during Fall Fest, which I was seeing the signs and I can't believe it's already almost Fall Fest, but it's exciting. Um, and then I have brought enrollment numbers, but, um, only for, uh, pre-K through, through eight. So BMS is at 407, BES is at 409, and ECLC is at 138 totaling 954. These are numbers as of 9/9. Um, so the next time, uh, we come, we can have updated numbers. And then the last thing that I have is that, um, we did pick our members for the SB ABC, so our process is starting just like yours is as well. And so I want to say thank you to Dave Toddie, Sarah Gould, Scott Chase, Hannah Miller, and Scott Ramsey.
Excellent. Alrighty, um, while we have you guys up there, if that's all, um, reduce speed school zone signs. On 90125, uh, there's always been a, a strength of concern and, um, we're looking for a, uh, supporting joint request between the school board and the select board to the New Hampshire DOT, um, for the installation and maintenance, they will not fund, but we will have to fund. So this is simply to get together with you guys to see if we could do a joint request to get the process started, to get some signs in town.
Um, thank you for that. And I think this is probably the most public, will be the most public first example of the benefits of having the joint committee. Um, it's definitely something that we've gone back and forth with as long as I've been on the board and I heard history before that of just the dangerous roads, just because it's so fast. And with the builds in town, we have more students walking and biking as they should in this beautiful town, um, but we want them to be safe. And so we are very interested to, to work together on that and, um, are looking forward to, um, discussing it further at a school board meeting, um, next week, but we know that it's something that we definitely support.
Any questions or concerns from the board? Looking for a vote on this one.
You need a motion?
He is.
My turn. Um, I immediately approve a joint request for the school board to the New Hampshire Department of Transportation authorized reduced speed school zone signs on Route 125 around Barrington Elementary School and on Route 9 around Barrington Middle School.
Second. Roll call.
Hardikoff, I.
Man, sure. Sakoshia.
Campy LOI.
Excellent.
I just had one thing I wanted to just mention. Um, we, the, the school district brought a tree company in to do some work. We had some dangerous limbs at the ECLC that need to get taken care of. That was taken care of about, what, a week and a half ago they did that?
Yeah.
And, uh, we have some more work that needs to be done, probably at the elementary school. Um, I had a facilities meeting the other, a week ago, cause I don't have enough things to do. I said, I'll get on the facilities committee too. But we, the, uh, Joe Williams talked about, um, a couple of different options and I'm not sure what he's going to do. I suspect that he may try to put a line in the budget for tree work. Um, and we discussed at the, uh, joint meeting the other, last week, uh, I brought up the, the idea of that this might be something, uh, certainly not taking down 30-foot trees by our highway department, but you know, that it might be reasonable for the school board to approach the town about the possibility of maybe the highway department being able to do some, some of the lighter work, some, similar to what they already do on the sides of the roads. And, and again, I'm a firm believer, have said, been for years, is that anytime we can do things together that can ultimately save the taxpayers a couple of dollars, um, we should be looking at that. So you may, you may see something about that down the road.
Thank you for the heads up. Cool. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Connor, does the town have a discount or contract with any kind of tree service? I know the new library has some tree work they're talking about and is there an advantage to kind of, in the spirit of a joint?
Yes, I think that's a fantastic idea. I'll share the tree contractor that we've been using with both the library and the school. Excellent point.
Okay. Uh, next up on public hearings and invited guests is drawdown notification and rehabilitation of Mendum's Pond. And we have Charlie Tatum.
Crowman.
Crowman here to present.
Perfect.
And just.
As long as it's green. Oh no, it looks like they shut it off. There you go.
All right. Thanks for having me, Charlie Crowman. I'm with the, uh, DES Engineering and Construction, Construction Group. Um, we are tasked with rehabilitating the 273 state-owned dams in New Hampshire. Mendum's is one of our high-hazard dams that we've been looking to rehabilitate for some time. There's stability concerns, it's a 30-foot-plus-high dam. Sorry?
Can you put the volume up or?
We can. You keep going, I'll put the volume up, make sure it works. Okay, so, yeah, um, per RSA 48213, we have to provide public notification, closer to me?
Yeah.
Uh, for doing a drawdown, um, outside of the normal operations. And so of recent, the normal drawdown at Mendum's is four feet and this, uh, fall, starting on November 11th, we're going to draw down the pond approximately 20 feet to have it reconstructed next year. Um, we've received a bunch of funds through the American Recovery Plan Act and we're using that funding to reconstruct the dam. We've put the project out to bid. Uh, this summer, we had four different bids and the low bid came out, out at $4.4 million. And ideally, next Wednesday, governor and council will approve the contract. So the contract's been approved by up through the commissioner at DES and the attorney general. And so the last signature that we need is by governor and council next Wednesday. With that, we'll be able to provide the notice to proceed and we'll start the drawdown November 11th. People will start to see activity out there in December. Um, there'll be our own construction crew removing the existing cofferdam that's a few hundred feet upstream of Mendum's Pond Dam. And then likely in March, the, uh, contract, contractor that won the award will mobilize and start work out there.
Awesome.
Excellent. Ready for some questions?
Sure. And I'll leave you guys a hard plan set. Um, I think Connor has everything online as well.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead, since this is a public hearing, I'm going to open up public comment. Please feel free to come on up, state your name and address, and if you have any questions, now is your time. Come on up, sir.
Just make sure that microphone light is green.
How's that? That looks like it's lit.
The green?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm Stephen Jeffrey, 128 France Road. Uh, from the plans that I've seen, it appears you're going to bury the downstream side of the dam. Correct. So I guess the primary part of this project is there's stability concerns. I understand that, yeah. A downstream masonry wall. So, uh, what we're going to be doing is installing a, an elaborate tow drain system and then burying that under a bunch of different types of filters and then building up a downstream embankment. Right. So it's going to look different than what it currently looks like. You'll still be able to see a few feet of the downstream masonry wall at the top. Yeah, well, it's a beautiful-looking dam. I'd like to photograph it before you bury it. Do you have any issues with that? Help yourself with taking photos. All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in studio, online that would like to come up and speak on this matter? Please.
And if you're online, just as this gentleman approaches, please just raise your hand, let us know that you're interested in speaking and the chair will call on you. Thank you.
Raise your virtual hand.
Yeah, well, yeah, the, the team's feature does have a hand, virtual hand feature technology.
Uh, hi, Jim Farnham, 98 Mendum's Landing Road. Uh, so we kind of worked with Jim, who I guess is finally retired?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, on the last project, I assume that the intent was that when they fixed it, that it wouldn't need to be fixed again, correct?
No, that, uh, the.
No?
The project that happened a few years ago was really for emergency measures.
Oh. And, and they were trying to stop water from undermining the dam? Was that essentially correct?
Yeah.
Did that not get accomplished or?
Well, Mendum's has always had seepage and leakage issues.
At the bedrock?
And what happened a few years ago is, is we saw some, uh, holes in the pond bottom that water was actually going through, is carrying sand, silt, sediment. And so that, that's what created that emergency, uh, project where we worked on the upstream side of the dam.
Mm-hmm.
But we always knew that we would have to come back and work on the downstream side for stability reasons.
Okay, actually, I didn't know that. So, so what's the, the downstream side's going to be, what, a bunch of riprap? Is that the plan?
No, it will be like a, a three-to-one slope that'll be able, we'll be able to mow it.
Oh, okay. And the, the timeliness of this project?
So we only have a preliminary schedule based on the bid. So the contractor, once we provide them the notice to proceed, they'll put together a detailed construction schedule.
Mm-hmm.
But what they submitted in the bid suggested that they're going to mobilize in March. Um, there's three different phases of the project.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the first phase was going to be completed around June timeframe, and so that's all the excavation and foundation work.
Mm-hmm.
The second phase of it was going to be completed sometime in mid-March, or sorry, mid, mid, um, July. And that, after that second phase is completed, um, we can allow the pond to go up to winter levels, so about four feet below.
Oh.
What the normal pool is. And then the third phase, uh, they're proposing to be done, or estimating in like November timeframe.
So there's really only going to be one summer where it's impacted, is that?
That's, yeah. Ideally, I mean, if, if we have really bad weather, um, but essentially the substantial completion is at the end of April. So the project really needs to be completed at the beginning of 2026, so.
Great, thank you. Those are all my questions. Is the town going to, so we have taxes for living on a beautiful lake and it's not going to be, it's going to be a moonscape for at least a year, so we should probably pay about a third what our normal taxes are? I think we got like a 3% discount last time or something, so for whatever it's worth.
I, yeah, I'll, I'll address that if you'd like. So probably wishful thinking. So I talked to the assessor about it. So as you probably know, uh, property taxes and assessed value is based on market value. Um, and I don't know if there's anybody in this room, but the last time the lake was drawn down, there's actually quite a few sales during that time period. And those sales reflected no reduction in market value. And so unfortunately, the data probably doesn't support any reduction in assessed value, um, even with the, the lake being drawn down. Um, and so there is an abatement process, which is I think how things happened. It was before my time, uh, but in, in 2017, so the residents filed for abatements, um, you know, citing a reduction in value.
Mm-hmm.
And the town processed those abatements to, you know, some, um, marginal reduction. Um, but I don't.
Yes, marginal.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So I just don't want to, I'm just trying to manage expectations.
I, I, I didn't think it was necessarily your prerogative to make a determination right now. I noticed there are a lot of different people here though, so, uh, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, and just to introduce, Jim Gallagher's replacement is Corey Clark. He's the chief engineer of the dam.
I love to Jim, but, uh, yeah. Thanks, Corey, nice to meet you.
Yes, thank you.
Will we be able to contact you guys online a little bit?
Of course.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else in studio or online? Please come on up.
And we'll get through the folks online, or in person, and then we'll catch up to the folks online. Thank you for raising your hand.
Hi, good evening. My name's Carolyn Gould. I live on Mendum's on Vacation Drive in the summertime. Uh, the last time the, uh, water was withdrawn, um, when the water was planned to be brought back up, there were deep cliffs in the entire area, uh, so deep that, that, uh, I, I spoke to your engineer, I think it was Jim Gallagher. Mm-hmm. And, uh, he came out and checked it out before the water came up to the regular level. And he had to bring out a team of people and trucks to level it because it was so, uh, inappropriate for swimming. Is that the kind of thing, once this is done again, uh, that we could possibly have somebody from the department come out, make sure it's safe for swimmers? Uh, because it was really quite a disaster.
Is this like regrading the pond bottom?
The pond bottom was like different cliffs and, and it was six feet, 10 feet, uh, it was not flat at all, so it needed some real attention.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I'm not familiar with what happened out there, but from the sounds of it, I, I think we would need a wetlands permit to do anything different from what we're currently planning on.
Well, it would be very good if somebody could come out and look at it before the water came up, because we've got swimmers and we've got a, we've, we've got a neighborhood of, uh, 15, 20 families and.
Well, yeah, I guess.
It would be very dangerous.
Make, make us aware of it and we can take a look.
All right. My name's Karen, Karen Gould.
Yeah, we've emailed.
We've met.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Hi, my name is Chris Carr. I have land on Hemlock Lane and, uh, I'm just kind of concerned why, is there any kind of, uh, idea to use a cofferdam to make it a little better for the people that live on the, on the lake? I mean, because we lose 20 feet of water. You're looking at, you know, 35 feet up by Hemlock Lane, well, there's actually nothing. I mean, you could walk from Hemlock Lane to McDaniel's Shore Drive. I mean, when we did this in 2017, it was like a, a desert. Is there any way that we can not draw it down 20 feet and still have you accomplish what you need to do and still let us have some type of lake there?
Based on the evaluation from the engineer, uh, the design engineer, that we, we do have to draw it down, but there, there is going to be a series of different diversion structures out there. There's going to be a relatively big cofferdam, um, outward the existing one, where it, where it necks down, a couple hundred feet upstream of the dam. So that will be built, built up to, I think it's elevation 212, so it will be essentially like a 12-foot-high, um, cofferdam and it will have an 18-inch pipe through it. Then there'll be another, uh, cofferdam structure right in front of the dam where they'll, um, collect the water and pump it around. Okay. But during that first phase of the project up through, what they're suggesting is, well, the second phase, um, up through July, uh, they're going to keep it down low and then once they finish that second phase, you can raise it 16 feet maximum.
Okay. Now, is there any kind of, uh, penalty for missing deadlines for the, in the contract?
There aren't any deadlines. I mean, the deadline happens if they don't meet substantial completion in April of 2026. But I think, you know, the contractor wants to do their best to get out of there as soon as possible. For them, it's really, it's like a six-to-eight month project. So I don't think they're really going to want to drag it out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Uh, we do have some participants online.
That one's JC.
Let's go with JC.
You'll have to unmute yourself?
Could be.
Okay, yes, that's me. Um, so I have a question. Uh, our rec department takes campers to Mendum's Pond. Will there be any water for swimming next year? Or will the water be drawn so far that there won't be any swimming at Mendum's?
Yeah, there's.
The UNH, um, area.
There, there's still a pond out there, but you're going to have to walk along the pond bottom to get out to it. I know that UNH has asked us about sailing out there and I think they still plan to do some sailing, moving their dock down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up online.
I don't see anybody else online.
Okay, I saw a three in the corner.
Oh, please. I just said, there's nobody else online, so yeah. Virtually, I should maybe say. Those from New York, online means something different.
Gary Kilpatrick, 723 McDaniel's Shore Drive. Just a quick question, um, for the engineer. Is there going to be a, a publish, a publication of sort of progress report?
Yeah, we'll, we'll likely have bi-weekly meetings out at the site and I don't know if they're in the crowd here, but I've been in contact with Beth Olshansky and Don. And it's, it sounded like they were going to put together a Facebook page.
They did.
Okay, and so I was going to use them as a conduit to spread the news, just so that I'm not answering questions from lots of different people.
Thank you. And just a follow-up question for Connor.
Yes.
When the, um, this is on the taxes again, and I look back at mine, I may be mistaken, but it was in the area of a 20% reduction on taxes. But I guess the real question I have is, this is probably for the assessor, but I'll ask it here. Is the comparables lakefront or other land in Barrington, when you judge what current values are?
Yeah, um, that's a good question, um, and it depends. Um, so for the purposes of like the drawdown, the, the comparables would be other properties on Mendum's. Um, and like I said, the, so when I talked to the assessor about it, like I said, I wasn't here and so I was curious that abatements were processed. Um, and what she said is that the, a lot of abatements came in and it wasn't until afterwards that they were really able to crunch the numbers and analyze the data because there were sales. And the, in the assessing world, sales are, that is the end-all, be-all for what the market value is, because there's a market determination of value at the time of purchase. And so during the time of the last drawdown, there were a number of sales that reflected at or above the existing assessed value, um, let alone a reduction. And so I, I, only speculating here, but it appears that the market, the real estate market, um, doesn't factor in those temporary adjustments, um, like the pond being lowered for a summer, um, in the sale price. And unfortunately, the basis for assessed value is the market value. There's no ability for this board or the assessor or even the state to make artificial adjustments to the assessed value. Um, the state law is clear that it needs to be the market value. And, um, there are programs for exemptions and credits. Uh, there's an elderly exemption and a, um, disability exemption and veteran credits. Um, that, those are the only tools that the state gives municipalities for adjusting the property tax impact, uh, from a variety of factors.
So I'm here, what I'm hearing is only sales on lakes will be factored in?
So it, yes, uh, the most appropriate comparable sales are used for determining the assessed value. And so, yes, lakefront and lakefront is compared, um, you know, property not on a lake and not on a lake is compared. But there are many, um, in the assessing world, they call it neighborhoods, they're not true neighborhoods, but there are many neighborhoods, um, throughout Barrington that have similar market value, um, factors, um, based on sale prices. And so the assessor looks at those and categorizes neighborhoods. So like on Mendum's, there, there might be a neighborhood on like the Hemlock side or, um, uh, side of Mendum's that is different than the neighborhood of McDaniel's Shore Drive. And that might take into account the, uh, road condition and road maintenance and how that might impact the, um, sale prices that they're seeing for comparable houses. So it's, it's more complicated than just looking at, um, one category of properties.
My last question, just.
Please.
Drill down a little deeper. Sales on Ayers or Bo, uh, Nipple Lake or Swains, I would assume would be factored in?
In a, in a normal year, absolutely.
In a normal year, but a year with the drawdown, would they be looking at sales on those lakes? I know this may be not your specific area of.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, the answer is, I can for sure. So the town doesn't wholesale adjust values every year, right? So the assessed value is the assessed value until it moves outside of the market value. So the assessor and the state monitors our assessed values and sale prices. And once we start deviating, or at least every five years, um, no more than five years, or if we deviate outside of plus or minus 10% of the assessed value where the sale prices are. Um, so in Barrington, we've had to update our values every two years. Most recently, values came up an average of 30%. Two years before that, it was 20%. Two years before that, it was 12%. And that's market-driven. The real estate market in Barrington, um, has kind of been out of control. And so to keep up with it, we've been adjusting values every two years because we've been outside of that window. So there's no revaluation planned for next year, so there'll be no wholesale adjustments in anybody's value next year. Um, but even if there was, the assessor, um, the assessor wouldn't, uh, make a, um, value adjustment if there isn't data to support it. Um, and what she knows from the last drawdown is that there isn't data to support that the market value is impacted by a temporary drawdown of the lake.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I hope that answers your questions.
Okay, please come on up.
Marie Daniels, uh, 90 Mendum's Landing. I have a couple of questions. Um, seven years ago, when the work was done, um, heavy equipment came up our road. Will that not happen this time?
That was on Mendum's Landing.
Mendum's Landing Road.
All the access is going to be off of roof.
Okay. Um, and the other question is, uh, if Phase 2 is done mid-July and that will begin the And the other question is, if Phase 2 is done mid-July and that will begin the refill up to the winter level, do you have a ballpark? I'm just trying to figure out, you know, will we have anything in August where I don't have to carry my board 20 feet in? Yeah, how quickly will it fill up to the four-feet mark?
If it rained like last July, like it will take a week.
Oh.
Yeah. It really depends on how much it's raining.
Okay. All right. But you'll adjust the dam to allow for this-
Completely shut water off from going downstream. We always have to allow flow for aquatic species downstream.
Sure.
But we can minimize it.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Anybody else in the studio?
Just a quick follow-up.
Oh, there's a gentleman back here. Just one minute.
Go ahead. I prefer you, Mr. Carr.
Yeah, so there's going to be a cofferdam that's about 12 feet high, but it's not, it's going to be a pass-through until July. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Here comes the important question.
If I can read it. Steve Super, family's been on the lake since, I think, 1960. So I think the fourth generation is now using the lake. So every year is very precious now. So I just have a couple of questions. First, on the funding, if you could go into a little more detail, just want to make sure there's no federal funding involved since I just got a notice from my friend that the government's deficit was now $37 trillion, $100,000 for everybody in the country. So if we're counting on federal money and there's an election coming up, a little worried about that.
Yeah, no, it is funded by federal money, but we received it a few years ago.
Okay, so it's in the bank?
It's in the bank.
Okay. Terrific. And if you could go into a little more detail on that cofferdam and why do you need that? Can you build a cofferdam a little more secure so you don't have to go down 20 feet? Why do you need to go down 20 feet? I guess if you go into a little more detail.
The best place to build a cofferdam in general is up at that-
Yeah, I know. It's too bad they didn't build the dam there.
Right.
Because it's 90 feet.
A couple of people would have lost the lake, I think, but-
I'm sure they would have been compensated.
Right. So that's the best location just because the cofferdam would be the smallest volume of earth.
No, I'm not arguing with the location, but can it, since it's so small, can't that be, Dr. Sidso, don't need to go down 20 feet?
Yeah, I guess the problem is, the first part of this project is going to be excavation and foundation work downstream of the dam where-
So you're going to compromise the dam and you want to make sure that-
Well, there's continuous seepage and leakage issues, so we want to have it as dry as possible. So that's why we want to put the pond upstream as far as possible and then keep it as dry as possible right in front of the dam.
But if someone looked at making a really robust cofferdam so you don't have to let the level of the lake, let's take a vote. If we could have a robust cofferdam so we don't need to go down 20 feet, we'd all-
$100,000 is going to turn into $150,000.
Yeah, I mean, the cofferdam that-
Yeah, for $4 million we're talking about. I mean, you know, 90-foot dam? Give me a million and I'll build you a dam there.
The cofferdam that the engineer has designed is pretty elaborate, and that's at that small area.
But is the safety of the dam workers that you're worried about? Or are you compromising the dam when you're doing this work?
All of those things.
All of those things? Okay. All right. And let's see, I think the funding's good. It looks like you've got a good plan. I think when this, we did this last time, the state made a mistake of giving me 90 years of water flow information on the Lamprey area, watershed. And so I figured out that they had to close up things by like March 1st for the dam to fill. So it looks like you have a good plan of July to get it to the, we could fill it up down four feet. But if you could have a real good plan, that it's absolutely going to be able to be filled by March 1st, I think that would make us all happy because I don't want to lose two years.
Oh, my God.
Gonna pray for rain.
And the taxes. My condo, a rental condo in Massachusetts burned down. And so the town came to us and said, since your condo burned down, you don't have to pay any taxes. So to me, if we can't access Mendham's, that's just like it burned down and it's not there for a year. So again, let's take a vote. Would everybody do you a favor? Not paying their taxes? Okay.
It's too bad that $4.4 million budget doesn't include compensation to the lakefront property owners, right? Those litoral rights.
Well, should have. Who did the budget? Redo it.
Down to the residents who use it too.
Thanks, you guys. You did a great job last time, I think. I went to a lot of the meetings and I was really impressed. So I got a serious headache reading all the plans, but it's like it's very robust. But if you could help with, you know, our concerns, that'd be terrific. Thanks for coming. Thanks for having the meeting.
Thank you.
I look forward to my second meeting.
Okay. Anybody else left in studio? We're getting close to the 15 minutes. If nobody in studio or online, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. And thank you for coming.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, don't everybody leave. There's more exciting stuff to talk about. We don't get this crowd often. I make it entertaining, I promise. Have a good night. Okay.
If you don't mind, just keep it moving. There's a nice lobby out there. You can chat with your friends and neighbors. Thank you.
Okay. Onto public hearings and invited guests. That's going to bring us down to sea issuance of a building permit on Holiday Lakeshore Drive, a private road for Karen Gould, map 261 lot 59.
Please. Yep. Come on up.
Just make sure your mic is green. Have the green ring on there. Wherever you want, yeah. Hit the button. Karen.
On your microphone, there's a one-circle button. Just press that, it'll turn green. That's perfect.
They're on. You may need it slightly closer to you. There you go.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Well, start by telling the select board what you're trying to do.
I'm trying to add an addition to what was originally considered an ADU. And it's located at 310 Holiday Lakeshore Drive.
Can hear from back here. Karen, can you bring the microphone in a little bit more? You'll have to be probably about this close.
Better? Okay. Thank you. I had been living at 27 Vacation Drive. It's 50 steps down to Mendham's. And because of my age, I built a small place at the top of the hill a couple of years ago. And it was built as an ADU. And it was later determined that it could have been a regular home rather than an ADU. So what I'm trying to do now is add some space because it's got about 400, 500 square feet, and I'd like to add a few hundred more square feet for an office and just a little more room.
So this was reviewed by department heads. This is presented as a Category 3 Option 1, which means that the road will be brought to the full standard specified in the Classics Private Road Building Policy. That's what the applicant has proposed to do. The road agent pointed out some deficiencies which keep it from being at the specifications currently. It was also reviewed and recommended by the planning board. I will note, and maybe Karen, you can speak to this, the code enforcement officer said that maybe sometime today, there was a conversation with the road association and you about, as part of bringing the road to the standard, working with the road association to bring it to the standard.
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, I think there's an area called a shoulder to access coming in, and there's a need to do some work, and I think the association has agreed to do that.
At your cost?
I think they're covering it. But if they're not covering it, I will do it at my cost.
Okay. So the intent of the Classics and Private Road Building Policy is that the, that an applicant is making improvements to the road. So there are two categories. Category 1, or Option 1, excuse me, is that bringing the road to the full standard. Sometimes you can bring the road to the full standard at a lower cost than Option 2, which is a 10% investment in the road for incremental improvements. But in both cases, the expectation is that it's the applicant that's bearing the cost of the road improvements. And this is a way that we can incrementally improve our Classics and Private Roads throughout Barrington. To the select boards, for the select board's purposes, it doesn't matter how the road gets improved as long as it does, but your certificate of occupancy would be tied to those road improvements.
I understand that. And I also may decide to do the road repairs myself to save the association the cost or the involvement in doing that work.
Yeah, so we always recommend that property owners consult with the road association because a lot of times they know best what the road needs and have folks that have done work. But there's no requirement how the work is done, as long as it's done and meets the requirements of the approval.
Well, the head of the road, the person responsible is Steve Clough, and he's been contacted and involved in the entire process.
Excellent. Tracy?
I just, quick question. Who determined that the ADU was actually a regular home?
It was determined by the building department.
Okay. If you're good, we're going to open this up to public comment because it is a public hearing. So anybody, please come up, state your name, address. Please be respectful.
Hi, my name is Amy Jones, and I live on Valentine Drive. I'm an abutter of Karen Gould's properties and also a member of the HOA. There are other abutters here today as well. My husband has been maintaining this road for years, and along with the president, Steve Clough, has, you know, been well aware of the corner in which this parcel is located and the type of work that's needed. In fact, an email was sent, and that was not read here as part of that today. We are asking as an association for Karen to be responsible for the costs of the upgrade of the roads as it puts an undue burden on the association, and we do not have the funds currently to make these road improvements. We also have concerns about whether or not that those funds would be sent to the HOA, and so we would like those funds to be available prior to making the upgrades so that the burden of the costs are not shared on the association. I also want to make sure that everyone is aware of some discrepancies throughout this entire process. This particular project started as a garage on a parcel of land that was conveyed to Karen Gould with land restrictions. I brought copies of everything. I'm happy to share that with you all today. And the prior application for the ADU, which was in addition to an existing garage that probably should have never been allowed from the get-go, the information provided on this particular parcel is not the parcel in which it's built on. My concern as a landowner in Barrington is the discrepancies and accuracies and the lack of follow-through amongst town employees, the select board, and the planning board to verify the accuracy of the information provided by the landowner. I am not alone in those concerns. So I've brought copies for everyone today. I'd love for them to be reviewed. I think it's important to know that the original application for the ADU was given on 319 Holiday Lakeshore Drive. That parcel was conveyed to Karen Gould by Ben Gilman. That is a separate property. That is not where this property is built. This particular land or parcel was conveyed by Brookwood Park Shores with the restrictive use on that land. It is not to be developed for real estate. It is not to be developed for any potential profits. The continued enablement of the town to allow for building continues to allow Karen Gould to develop this parcel, which was conveyed to her to be left alone in perpetuity. Now, recognize that the town is limited in where they can step in in this process. However, given all of the information that I'll provide to you today, along the way, all applications have had discrepancies, corrections of the deed that have been provided, and seem to get buried now in a tax card or tax map that's been merged together. The abutters lack the ability to look up this information publicly on their own because now all the deeds are missing from the tax card. That is a concern, and as landowners, that is public knowledge that we all have the right to access. Correct? So I want to know, and I realize none of you have to answer me now, in the future, when landowners bring projects for the town to review, at what point will the town hold landowners to the same responsibility as land developers? Also, it should be noted that this is not a hardship. And while I understand the need and the desire to put another property there, Karen does own several properties in the area, not just Barrington. So it is not for a matter of hardship. Though I respect her desire to use her parcel as she sees fit, the hardship that this puts on us as an HOA and the lack of responsibility of the town to go back and review these inaccuracies just continues to put more burden on us. So I'm happy to provide this to you.
Have you made a formal complaint?
I would love to, but I believe that my communication with the town is not received very well. I'd be happy to put in a complaint, actually. I know that I, as an abutter, or I as a landowner, are held to an incredible standard when I submit my applications, that I'm required to perform surveys and all of the steps as anyone else is. But if there were an inaccuracy, I would absolutely have someone come up and speak against that. So I think it's important for the town to know that when a landowner provides you information such as a deed or such as restrictive covenants, while you may not have the ability to enact the town attorney to review that information, you still have a responsibility as a town to make sure that that land use is not only correct and allowed, but also it's the right parcel that you're giving a building permit on. This parcel is not 319 Holiday Lakeshore Drive, and I don't know how it's even has its own address. I respect that it now exists, but it really should be like 319A Holiday Lakeshore Drive. It is not a single-family dwelling. And I'm happy to review those with anyone, but I think the town has a little more due diligence to do. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else in studio?
Stephen Jeffrey, 128 France Road. I just want to preface my comments. I'm not for or against whatever's happening here. I've lived in Barrington since '53.
We are going to be talking about this property.
That's right. My property abuts Karen Gould's property for quite some distance. My comments are based on my knowledge of what's happened here. The original subdivision was never approved by the town. I doubt that the road was ever constructed to what would be considered current codes and standards for gravel, base, et cetera, ditches, everything. Right now, there's no cistern for fire protection that I'm aware of, and Holiday Lakeshore Drive is several thousand feet long and dead-end. This property has frontage on France Road, and I think Hall Road too, depending on how you look at it. The access to this house is going to be off Holiday Lakeshore Drive. So it seems to me that a special exception for use of a different side of the property is required because she's not accessing from a Class 5 road. The building that's there now was originally permitted for a garage, and then the house was built without a permit, so the town issued an after-the-fact permit. Now Karen is proposing to add a 24-by-36-foot structure, which is a pretty good-sized cape. When I look at it, it looks to me like it creates a two-family dwelling, could easily be converted to that. And as a primary dwelling on the property, there's a possibility of adding an ADU. So now we'd have three residences there. And as was mentioned before, the current, or the deed on the 130 acres or whatever it is prohibits any for-profit development, and the land is supposed to be used for conservation purposes only. Now, I applaud anybody that wants to conserve their land in any extent that they can. So anyway, I just want the select board to consider what's being proposed here. Should we be thinking about future liabilities to the town? Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the studio? Online? Anybody else in studio, online? Okay, we're going to go ahead and close public comment. Any conversation, thoughts from the board?
Karen, what's the timeframe that you are planning to do construction? How soon are you, is this?
I would like to do it in the next few months before the snow comes. It's a very small space that I'm living in right now. I was, I was living in the lake house, but it's too dangerous for me there, so I'm, it's much safer on high ground, and I just need a little more space, so it's about 600 square feet I want to add on.
Oh, just closer to the microphone, Karen, that's all. Thank you.
Tracy?
Does the possibility exist that we tabled this just to explore whether a quitclaim deed that conveys the transfer of the land can actually enforce with the quitclaim non-utilization of land?
So, the town's attorney has reviewed the deeds, so the, and I'm happy to address as much of the public comments as you'd like me to, but the, relative to the deed question, the planning board was concerned about the deeds and what deed restrictions might exist. And so the town's attorney reviewed both the content of the deeds and the town's ability to enforce the restrictions that are in place. What she found was interesting, you know, fortunately for like conservation property, when a property is properly conserved, that conservation easement is protected by the charitable trust division of the attorney general's office. There's no evidence that the property was properly conserved in that way, and so there is no third party that is positioned like the charitable trust division to enforce any terms of that. Beyond that, any restrictive covenants, or deed restrictions, or other protections on a property, when it's transferred, become a private matter, a civil matter between whoever put the restrictions on and the property owner. They aren't for the town to enforce, and the town has no mechanism to enforce them. And that, that is true also with, you know, land use applications and decisions. And so the town's attorney acknowledges the content of the deeds, which she reviewed, but also acknowledges that it isn't the town's place, the town's responsibility to enforce restrictions in deeds where it isn't party to them.
My other question is, is this landowner receiving taxation like this as conserved property?
So, I can research that, I mean, the, a lot of times, it doesn't have to be conserved to have a reduced tax burden. Current use values are, you know, as close as you can get to conserve, and that doesn't require a, do you know if any of the property is in current use of the?
The property is in current use.
So, the values, the assessed value of the property, it would be taxed similar to conservation property?
Okay. And there was a mention of responsibility of, by adding this addition on to the homeowners' association, I'm unclear what that means.
So, I, I'll make something definitely clear. So, the, the town's classics and private road building policy was, its existence is primarily to ensure emergency access. But the way that it's structured, the goal is for incremental improvements to the roads, and to take the opportunity, the town doesn't have much opportunity to make any improvements to classics or private roads, and one opportunity it has is with building permit applications, because the state law vests the authority to authorize issuance of building permits to the select board. So the select board has chosen to enact a policy aimed at incremental improvements to the roads, and the, that purpose is so that additional development on classics or private roads comes with improvements, not maintenance to the road, but structural improvements to the road, so that over time, or with one application, they are brought up to a standard, defined in the select board's policy as 16 feet wide with two-foot shoulders on both sides, the entire 20-foot width to support a fire truck, and having at least four inches of gravel on the road. And so, the, the purpose of the policy is to avoid that specific concern of an application bringing an undue burden to the homeowners' association, or the road association, whoever maintains the road. There was a comment about transferring the road improvement funds to the homeowners' association. So, for the town's purposes, the part that matters to the town pursuant to this policy is that if a building permit is authorized, and our road improvements required, that those road improvements are completed before the certificate of occupancy is issued, period. So, in practice, sometimes the property owner makes those improvements themselves, or hires somebody to make those improvements. Other times, the property owner will work with the road association and say, hey, I've got to invest $15,000 in this road, here's the $15,000, you know how to make these improvements better than I do, or you work with the contractors, et cetera, and they work to make sure the work is done. So, all of those are possible, but the town doesn't get involved in how it happens. The only time the town would get involved is if we had a situation on Micah Point, and there was a culvert going in on Micah Point, that it really made the most sense to install that culvert in the fall, when the water was low. But they were going to finish their construction like in the spring or early summer. And so the town entered a contract with the road association, the property owner, and the town, so a three-party contract, that said the road association would take the $2,500, don't quote me on the exact value, but the road association would take that money and spend that money to repair the culvert in the fall after the certificate of occupancy was issued. So that way, the, we could replace the culvert at the appropriate time seasonally, and the town had a mechanism to ensure it was done. So, that's the only time that the town would get involved in the details of how the road improvements are made, is if it's, the timing doesn't make sense to do it, do it the same way. But in the case where there's a good organized road association, we definitely encourage, and the policy says so, work with the road association so that you're working together to make the improvements, especially in a situation where the proposal is to bring the, that section of the road to the full standard of the classics and private road building policy. Does that answer your question, Suckers?
I think there's also some challenges between the roadwork and who's doing it, and how it's going to be provided, to make any call.
One second, you stand.
Is there a written plan on what the road improvements are going to be? I'm used to seeing that spelled out, what's going to be done, what the prices are, and that the town officials have approved those as being valuable to the improvement.
Right. So those, that same scope isn't as required when they're proposing to bring it to the standard, because we know what the standard is, and, and we're not worried about the determination of value, because what, what the applicant is saying is, I will bring it to the standard regardless of the cost. And so, the hope is that the applicant has done their due diligence to know that the cost, that, you know, they're willing, but they won't have a certificate of occupancy until it meets the standard. If you'd like to look at a future revision to the policy that outlines, you know, the scope for option one, we could do that.
Have you received an estimate for what it will cost to bring it to standard?
No.
How do you know that you're able to afford that?
Well, I have been talking to a contractor to do it, and they have a copy of those specs, so I have yet to get an estimate.
I, I would feel most comfortable tabling this and getting that breakdown, including the shoulder that's been talked about. I think it's important to note that no board within the town can enforce HOAs. That is up to the HOA to sit as an entity and to utilize their legal power when they need to. That is not up to any town board or any town department to do. But in order to feel most comfortable with this, I'd like to see the breakdown of the work and the costs, including, including that shoulder that's been discussed.
Another question, how is it determined that an accessory dwelling unit all of a sudden becomes a full residence? Like, what, how do those lines, and how do we keep creep from?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So, the building inspector in your packet kind of put together a summary. Unfortunately, this is one of those situations that all of the, the development down in Holiday Lakeshore Drive is kind of a mess. Roads aren't in the right place, deeds describe land that isn't, that isn't reflective of the actual construction in that area. I understand that there has been some effort to resolve some of those issues, but it is, there are a lot of aspects to that area that, that are confusing to track, right? So, the building inspector put together a kind of a summary pertinent to this application. So, one of the root causes of early confusion with the property, when it was originally a garage and then an ADU, was the town, many years ago, along with towns all across the state, went through a process of involuntary lot mergers. So, the town took lots and merged them involuntarily to consolidate property records, et cetera. And the, after that was done, property owners had the right to come forward and say, you involuntarily merged these lots, you need to unmerge them. And so, that was one of the root causes, and what you'll see in Jamie's report, because...
Please, I...
I'm, I'm just talking to the select board.
Yeah.
You can, yeah, you'll have an opportunity, for sure.
Those, Tracy has copies of the voluntary mergers.
There were voluntary mergers also, so the, but at, at the same time, the wrong tax map and lot numbers were assigned to lots in the, in the transition of being merged and unmerged. And so, that, no question that it's a mess and, and hard to follow. Staff in doing the research to determine what's appropriate, you know, that's the purpose of having this report. So when it was, when the address, when an address was assigned as an ADU, that's when the available record showed that that was part of a house that I think was like across the street. And so that was the address that, because when you have a primary structure and an accessory dwelling unit or garage, it's part of the same address. But that was when the parcel was the same as across the street. And so, yeah, the, review the information from the building inspector, and if you have additional questions that you'd like to see information about, by all means, you know, let, let us know, we can have stuff put together.
I just, my only question was, can a quitclaim deed where land is transferred from family member to, to family member, can it hold the person to the restriction of not being able to build on the property?
Yeah, so we asked that same question in a different way to the town's attorney, and the town's attorney said it doesn't matter, because the town isn't going to enforce deed restrictions.
Understood.
There are entities to enforce deed restrictions.
Right, it would have to go to the state, sure.
The people that put them in place, or the heirs, or et cetera.
Understood.
And I think you had additional public comment if you were interested, I know you posed public comment, but if you want to open it.
I'd like to speak on behalf of the road association for the cost piece of it.
You could just, just one second, you'd have to reopen public comment if you wanted to.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and we'll reopen public comment.
So, there's an email from Steve Clough describing the process, or what he's looking for, for information from the town to be able to make those road improvements, and I do think that if you're going to request that it be extended on that corner, it's important to note that that's a 90-degree turn. So it's not like we're just widening the road down any straight section. That particular section of road shoots straight down to the lake, so on the 50 feet past the corner where Karen's driveway is, that culvert to the right-hand side and the left-hand side takes the majority of the water. So, it is not as simple as just widening, those culverts will have to be moved, and water, you know, it has to be intentionally engineered. So Steve's email talks about widening only to just what is required by the town. However, it means that Karen will have to give up some land on either side to be able to do that. So while the town can't enforce the HOA to do that, we have to be very mindful of how that work is done, because as some know in our history, the FEMA Mother's Day floods destroyed our road. So just as simple as widening will divert water in such a way that it could cause substantial property damage below, and we would not be able to recover from that. So, that's something to be very mindful of.
I'm hearing the select board would like to see a, a specific breakdown of the scope of work proposed with a fee, and that should address the concerns.
My quick question, are, do you vote as an HOA? Are you the actual president of the HOA?
Steve Clough is the president of the HOA, and he is not here tonight, his wife Linda is, and he emailed, which that email was not discussed during any of this.
Yeah, so I, I got a copy of a letter today from the building inspector, and he described that letter as that, that Karen and the road association had had a conversation about, and so I think that was just a miscommunication. So, when I was talking about the conversation, asked Karen to elaborate, I thought that's what was...
Again, I think that's where it's important for the town to do their due diligence and not take the fact of what's presented by the landowner.
We get our materials, you know, a couple of days before, I mean, last hour, when they email, can be tough sometimes.
Yeah, and I guess to the, to the extent that it matters to the town, and I tried to make this point earlier, it, it isn't for the town to decide how the work is done or who does it. We encourage in the policy the applicant to work with the homeowners' association, we have no mechanism to require that. Most homeowners' associations or road associations aren't even formally established in state law.
We completely understand.
Yeah, yeah, so there's no, to the extent that the road association has recommendations, those are best directed to the applicant, and the town, there, there's no mechanism for the town to facilitate the cooperation or agreement between the, the road association and the applicant. We're doing what we can to have incremental improvements to roads made, but there are limits to that.
Sure, but as we were forced into these road agreements, and we have no choice, our road, as you know, is not on the list of the bad roads, and is professionally maintained by many of the residents of the HOA. So, you know, we just want to make sure that we don't incur a loss we can't recover from, and that's important.
I agree, same goals.
Thank you, we're just over three minutes there, and we're going to go ahead and close public comment.
Could I ask one question? Sorry. And I apologize for how concrete I am, Marie Daniels, 90 men, those of us who live on the lake are fierce stewards of this lake, and we always thought that your land, that beautiful piece of land you have over there, couldn't be developed in part because it was in conservation and the access was always going to be problematic. Am I hearing tonight that that's not the case, that it's not in conservation, that it's just current use?
I think it's a different parcel.
Well, the 16 acres, and the whole, the whole shebang over there, is it not in conservation?
Should I address that?
We should be just talking about the application.
Yeah, just the, just the application, not the land, or...
So how do I get that question answered?
Maybe connect with Karen outside of the meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until we have breakdown of the cost for the improvement of the road with an outline to the scope and the details.
Before we do that, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment.
Thank you, sir.
And I will entertain that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Hardicoff, aye.
Sakoshai.
Kepi, loa.
Ms. Gould, do you, do you understand what's being asked of you?
What was the decision?
A specific scope and fee for the improvement to the road.
A scope and fee.
And that'll be due back to the town no later than Wednesday before the next select board meeting.
Wednesday before the...
The next select board meeting, on the 21st.
Can I pass these out regarding the easement, the conservation easement, that's under contract at this moment, or that's not relevant? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you drop them off, you can put them, yeah, give them to Tiffany if you want.
Okay, moving on, folks, consent agenda. I move we accept the, approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second on that.
We got a second, and we got a roll call.
Hardicoff, aye.
Sakoshai.
Kepi, loa.
Excellent. Moving on to appointments, just discussion for this one, Eyes and Glass Local River Advisory Committee. It's a committee of the Eyes and Glass Local River, not really heard about or talked about, but we do have a request for Elizabeth Duran. Any discussion on the board from the applicant?
I'm just excited to see people applying for volunteer work.
Excellent, okay. And then next on appointments, we have B, Planning Board, Scott Shepherd.
I move, I move to appoint Scott Shepherd as a full member of the planning board.
I enthusiastically second.
On March 2026.
Oh, sorry, sir.
Second from Tracy, roll call.
Hardicoff, aye.
He's the enthusiastic guy.
My apologies, sir.
Yes, Sakoshai.
And Kepi, loa. We're delighted to have him as a full member.
Excellent.
Okay, next on to C, Library Trustee, Richard Compagno. Library trustee, any discussion?
No.
He's been to several meetings as an alternate. I move that we appoint Richard Compagno as a full member of the library trustee, present to RSA 669. to RSA 669, Colton 75, with term expiring in March of 2025.
Second.
Roll call.
Hardikoff, aye.
Mantra, aye.
Sakoshai.
Kapiello, aye.
Okay, and then we have...
Farida.
Farida, for an advisory buddy committee alternate, this is just discussion.
Discussion only.
Any discussion on the individual?
And then she looks brilliant, so.
She met a member of the budget committee at one of the concerts, volunteering, asked about getting involved, and he suggested maybe the budget committee. And so I've talked to her a couple of times, she applied. She plans to attend the meeting on the 15th, although she won't be eligible for appointment by the select board until the 21st, but she'll serve in an alternate capacity with the select board's support.
Excellent. Okay, we're gonna close out appointments, and we're on to staff reports. Administrator Mackiver.
Great, thank you. We have one work anniversary in the month of October, and that's Sam Saroski, who's been with us for five years now, and he's a terrific officer, we're glad to have him, we hope we keep him. 2025 budget development, as you know, is underway. I'm glad to report that the online budget binder, barrington.nh.gov/2025budget, is live. Danan or Rob, if you want to hold up your budget binder that you have there, the entire multi-hundred-page contents of that binder that the budget committee and select board get is available online, well-organized, compliments to Tiffany Cottle.
Can you see how many people actually are reviewing that?
We can do analytics on the clicks.
I would love to see that, yeah.
Great.
Mine's the next one.
So we have, the advisory budget committee will kick off their budget review, they've had their binder for about a week now. They will kick off their budget review in this room on October 15th. That will be available for virtual participation at barrington.nh.gov/ABCmeeting, and the recordings of those meetings will be available on the town's YouTube channel.
Better tell them what time.
3:30.
There you go.
Ayers Lake Boat Launch and Project update, that we're still working on the state permits for that project. Barrington Center Development Committee update, so we've talked about the perimeter trail, you heard from the school board liaison that we're bringing Fall Fest, the kids over as part of that activity, so that trail's already getting its use. The highway department has also been working on expanding the municipal parking area, which looks absolutely fantastic.
Huge, yeah.
And so that, you'll notice that we left a vegetative buffer along 125, which will thin out a little bit in the winter because leaves fall off trees, but there's a nice buffer there. And that will be, as we've talked about at the committee, kind of the initial primary access for the Barrington Common Property. And so in order to access the Barrington Common Property from the parking lot, you have to cross land owned by Caleb's Country Store. And so the owner is very amenable, and we're drafting up some easement language to make sure that we can cross there. But the committee is working on signs notifying residents that that's where you park to access the Barrington Common Property. We're gonna have a kiosk just off the parking lot explaining to residents about the trail and other things going on.
Love that, great.
So talked about Fall Fest, we're gonna bring the participants in Fall Fest out into the trail, looking at pumpkins kind of along the way, little bit of a nod to the work they do over at the Moheramont Elementary School and their pumpkin stroll activity.
26, 12 to 4.
26, 12 to 4. Thank you, Mr. Rec Commission Liaison. And then also, and this is a really exciting project, the Barrington Center Development Committee is taking the feedback they heard from residents at the concerts and refining that. So that was kind of a qualitative data collection process, and they're taking that information and they're creating a survey to really dig into the quantitative, what is it that residents want? What are their priorities? What are their priorities if we have grant funding or if it's funded by property taxes? And so Jesse Bennett, who is a PhD member of the Barrington Center Development Committee, works at the University of New Hampshire in Recreation, and she's taking lead on developing that survey. And we plan to have that live by the November 5th election, and members of that committee will be there advertising the survey, but we'll also be getting the word out elsewhere, so stay tuned.
Any chance that we could have one or two laptops there where people could complete the surveys right there?
Excellent question. We will have three iPads and an iPad stand from the rec department, and we'll have the survey queued up so people can take them right there on the spot. So, yeah, a lot of great work by that committee.
Yes.
Other thoughts or questions? Moving on, Trail Interconnectivity update, so as I mentioned before, we have a draft map of all the trails, and committee has been giving feedback for future revisions of that plan. The group is excited about that connection to the elementary school, and it was actually select person Gibson who pointed out that it would be possible to get a connection to the cemetery off of Route 9. And so I've talked to the property owner, and the property owner's very willing, and so we're gonna start working on that connection from the Barrington Common Property to the cemetery, which is great. And I'm very excited to share that this last point here about the UNH Cooperative Extension Downtowns and Trails.
Mr. Prin.
I heard that we, they have officially accepted the town for this project, so they most recently worked in Keene, and I encourage you to look at some of the work that they've done. It is, it is very much a combination of everything we're trying to do in achieving the vision for the town center and interconnecting our trails. And so Cooperative Extension has a program where they look at the economic and community benefits of trails and developing, you know, like a center of town. And so they, we are gonna have a lot of high-quality work coming out of them for the project, and they will start early in 2025 and expect to complete in early summer, 2025. So there is a very nominal cost share. I'm gonna get a draft of the memorandum of understanding soon, it's like $3,000. So I'm sure we can come up with the money for the cost share. Seaco Shipyard Association data, so they send us a postcard, their union sends us a postcard every year, and I think the data's really interesting. Most interesting, I think, is that Barrington is the single largest non-city employer of the shipyard. So the four cities, Portsmouth, Dover, Rochester, and Somersworth, have more employees that work at the shipyard than Barrington, but then there's Barrington. We send a lot of, a lot of people, 159 employees, that bring back $14.5 million in payroll. So, okay, strategic planning goals update, I won't read through all of these, but we've been making a lot of progress. And again, you'll be able to scan and find progress in bold for those items that have been updated since...
Yeah, this is excellent, as a working document for the strategic plan, this is excellent because it allows us to just like scan through and see...
Where are we on this?
Yeah, and when, when we're not a part of a particular committee, see what the updates are of work that's getting done. So it's been amazing, thank you.
Absolutely. Appreciate that feedback. Okay, so moving on to training opportunities, the only one listed here is the 83rd Annual NHMA Conference. And I know select person Kapiello wanted to have a conversation about who's planning to attend and when, I think she's available to attend one of the days, and she was looking at maybe dividing and conquering. Is that the thought, Joyce?
Yes, that's it, thank you.
And I think I'm going just Wednesday.
I couldn't remember, and I didn't look it up.
Just Wednesday.
Hey, be able to go Wednesday with the ferry first, I know.
Okay. If you, if you decide you want to go on Wednesday, let me know, I'll get you registered.
Okay.
Okay.
Go a ride together?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Coffee first.
Okay, so I'm registering Jim. Yes, okay, done.
All right, so it looks like Thursday for me, Ben.
Okay, I'll get you registered.
Just to keep it covered, thank you.
Onto MOA, Cottle.
You've already signed the warrant for the state election and to repurchase deeds, thank you very much. There will be two oaths of office for the two appointments that were just approved, and that'll be on Thursday by DocuSign. That's it.
Excellent, thank you. Old business, Master Plan Implementation Request for Qualifications Award. On the 12th, the town advertised the request for qualifications for the master plan. We have submitted, the, the people who reached out, the contractor per se, is led by Resilience Planning and Design LLC. They are qualified and available to meet the required objectives. We've also submitted a grant to fund the majority of the state stated scope and budget. The first phase will focus on potential zoning amendments for 2025. This phase will, using task bonded pricing, will cost $16,960. Funding for this phase is proposed to come from Land Use Consultants, $11,000 available, and the incident fund, $42,000 available. Additional parts of the scope will be determined based on the grant award.
I was excited to read the qualifications package for this group. Would you like a motion?
Would love a motion.
Make a motion to award the Master Plan Implementation Scope to the team led by Resilience Planning and Design LLC, and to authorize a fee of $16,960 for the first phase.
Who? Roll call.
Hardikoff, aye.
Mantra, aye.
Sakoshai.
Kapiello, aye.
Onto B in old business, the expanded lease for the NHDOT, the crossing at 90125.
So I think I gave you all a teaser of this when we were talking about signs. I believe that one of the best ways that we can secure the Barrington Bloomers Garden and a potential Welcome to Barrington sign at the intersection of 90125 is to work with the state for a lease or some sort of license for that property. We obviously have a lease for the parking area that's just beyond there, and that's where I got the idea for that. I've talked to the folks at DOT that deal with their land management, and they've been open to it. I just heard back from one of them on Friday, which is why it's not in the town administrator report, and he asked for a formal letter of interest from the select board, which I asked to add to the agenda because I didn't think there would be much of a discussion about sending that letter of interest, but I wanted to make sure that there was a formal vote from the select board to send a letter of interest for a lease or a license to the property adjacent to the municipal parking area that encompasses the Barrington Bloomers Garden and a potential future Welcome Barrington sign location.
Make a motion, so move to please. Roll call.
Hardikoff, aye.
Sakoshai.
Kapiello, aye.
Great idea, thanks for working on that.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Okay, on to new business, election equipment. Kind of a unique situation here. We actually had an issue with one of our machines having a little meltdown and not having parts available for it. Now what the state has done, they'll provide 50% funding of, to municipalities for new machines. In addition to the machines, the machines also have to be, correct me if I'm wrong, stored in a separate location that is locked.
The ballots, right.
So the ballots. And pretty much what we would be trying to do is take $14,000 from the incident fund to cover this. And this is discussion only, but how do you guys feel on it? Comments, questions?
I don't think we have any choice, frankly.
I think we're in a little bit of a hard spot.
Yeah, will these, are we talking about these machines for this election?
No. No, the soonest would be the March election. And to be clear, this was originally a budget proposal for 2025. And in reviewing the budget, the finance administrator and I looked for as many opportunities as we could to reduce what we needed to ask for for a budget in 2025. This is an item that I thought that we could accomplish this year. The town clerk actually really wants to accomplish this this year, and so the proposal would be to use 2024 funds from the incident fund to get the machines ordered, hopefully they would be here for the March election, that's the only election we have next year, and we would have updated machines going forward.
Sounds good.
Right now, $42,000.
Forty-two.
So just discussion, happy to get you more information if you need it. I can put it on for a vote at the next meeting, or if you're feeling anxious, we can vote on it now, and one last thing next, next meeting.
Is the board comfortable now?
I feel comfortable.
Sure. I'll second that.
Okay, well, it looks like we'll see if we got a roll call for it.
Hardikoff, aye.
Mantra, aye.
Sakoshai.
Kapiello, aye.
Okay, on to B under new business, municipal parking expansion. We are pursuing a grant for the sum of $25,000, and in case, this is for the parking lot expansion that we've done, and in case that the grant does not come through, we would like to use $25,000 out of the TIF funds for the parking lot expansion.
Seems to me this is specifically what TIF is all about.
Right.
Is identifying these.
At what point is there a balance in the TIF?
So when bills are paid this December, or bills will be due in December, so we'll collect the full amount of retained property taxes in the second half billing.
We have less of an obligation on...
That's right. Yep, between the deposits.
Tracy.
Is it possible, is it possible to make a motion and in the motion state with the return of the tax incremental financing should a grant be approved?
So, yeah, and I was, I was talking to the chair about the best way to do this. I think the intent, the intent is simply to make sure that we have on record the authorization to use the funds from the TIF balance, you know, by the end of the year. There's multiple grant opportunities that we think could fund the project, and so we don't want to, we don't want to finalize that kind of until you know. And so my idea for the motion would just be that it gives us the authorization to use the funds because the select board has to authorize it. If you want to add language to the motion, makes that more clear, by all means.
As long as we remember it, is, so I was thinking, in order to be able to quickly recall that, the motion would be to authorize up to $25,000 in town center tax incremental financing district funds for the material costs of the expanded municipal parking area adjacent to the Barrington Common Property, with the understanding that should a grant be achieved for the same initiative, that the funds don't come from that.
Why don't we just say if, if a, if a proposed grant not materialized?
Or if additional funding.
Okay.
If additional funding doesn't materialize, authorize $25,000.
Excellent.
Before we make a motion, any more questions, comments from the board? Joyce?
No, all set.
So moved, do we have a second?
Second.
Hardikoff, aye.
Mantra, aye.
Sakoshai.
Kapiello, aye.
Alrighty, new business, letter C, Advisory Budget Committee Final Presentation Discussion. At their September 11th meeting, the Advisory Budget Committee discussed their upcoming budget review process. They wanted to give the select board an opportunity to provide direction regarding the final budget presentation on December 2nd, and how it would look, what details are important to the select board, how much of the process, is the select board expecting the Advisory Budget Committee to report on? Is the select board going to make determinations about wage increase and cost of living adjustment? Or does the select board first want a recommendation from the Advisory Budget Committee? The select board is asked to consider these questions and provide direction to the ABC. Tracy.
So I like our process where we review what's happening with cost of living, and I think it gives us a really good perspective of what to recommend to the Advisory Budget Committee regarding budgeting increases. I would like to, so this is new to us, so we're out of the budget process until large portions of work has been done. So I think for me, any additional FTEs that are being added to the budget, I would like to see those specifically, whatever department those are happening in, expansion of those full-time equivalencies. And then, I don't know if you want to set 3%, 5%, 10%, but any changes to line items that are significant, that, that, I think somehow we need to be able to kind of scan and be able to ask questions from that.
Been talking with Connor on this, I thought it would be a good idea to get, you know, keep it simple, but, you know, last year's budget, this year's budget increases, then line items, then obviously a recommendation.
So in, and I guess to elaborate on that a little bit, the select board has all of the budget proposal information. So at any point, this, any select board member could at any meeting say, I'd like to discuss, you know, X, Y, Z specific. Now, department heads, no, and I, and I'm sure I've shared this with the select board before, my intent is to take any ad into the budget that isn't just, this is how much it costs to do the same thing again.
Sure.
To the select board over the summer and the fall. We talked about adding a police officer, we're in the process of talking about the land use conservation position, et cetera. And so that, that process would continue. I think the, what the budget committee is looking for in addition to the thought about cost of living and step increase is... cost of living and step increase, is we're going to go through the process and, and make notes and comments throughout. It sounds like the expectation of the select board is that the budget committee will come at that December second meeting and present that. Think what they're wondering is, how do you want that presented? Jim, in our conversation suggested, hey, just give us a, what was last year's, what was the proposal from department heads in the town administrator this year, and what's the ABC's recommendation? And then just present off that. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yes.
Yeah.
I think we ought to give them, I think we ought to give the ABC guidance on the cost of living allowance, that I think we should.
That's what Tracy was saying.
Decide that before they come, they may want to recommend we change that, but I think we ought to give them our guidance.
Okay.
I agree with Dan on that, and maybe that's what Tracy was saying.
Yeah.
But we should discuss that at an upcoming meeting.
Yeah.
And we should, it's possible we'll have the data available for the October twenty-first meeting in the wages and benefits chapter, chapter three of the Budget Binder. You'll see the eleven-month data for the cost of living adjustment based on the Consumer Price Index. In October every year, we'll get the September Consumer Price Index data, so we'll be able to get the full twelve-month review, and then we'll also get the, what the Social Security Cost of Living Adjustment is for the next year. And so I feel like the Social Security Cost of Living Adjustment is usually later in October, but I'll monitor the data availability. We may be able to review that on the twenty-first if the data is available. If not, we'll do it on November fourth, I think is our next meeting.
We used to be, be giving your own bird's eye view of the budget, like revenue and expense expectations and all that.
Excellent question. So my plan was, and a copy of the presentation is already in the Budget Binder, but my plan was on the October twenty-first meeting to just give a speed run of the initial budget proposal that gives that bird's eye view like you're talking about, and if that's still okay with the select board. But then we won't get regular updates of substance until the end.
It sounds to me like we have some responsibility to do our homework and ask questions of Advisory Budget Committee if we see anything that stands out to us.
And the select board, it can absolutely attend any of the Advisory Budget Committee meetings also. We kind of talked about that as another outlet if the select board had a specific area of interest or concern.
Think we're, the budget committee, budget committee may have questions they're going to ask the select board, so I think we ought to be ready to entertain those, those questions. Because I think a lot of the discussion in ABC has always been about where we can work these numbers, but some of them, it's, they have policy decisions of various things become policy divisions. So there will, I think, my vision of the thing is the ABC will occasionally come select board with specific questions about specific things that they're discussing that plays into policy decisions versus just straight numbers.
Let me just start.
Good point.
Excellent.
And it looks like Social Security Administration announced that they'll be making their COLA announcement on October tenth, so we should have the data and we can have that discussion on the twenty-first. It, between now and the week before the twenty-first, if select board members want to look at the cost of living adjustment data methodology and the eleven-month data in the Budget Binder, and let me know if you want additional information. You'll also find in the Budget Binder, and this was a request from select boards in years past, is a review of the, through back to two thousand eighteen, the average employee wage increase and all changes to FTEs. And so that's been updated with twenty twenty-four data. And so that's the data the select board has asked for in half. If you take a look at that, if you want something else, let me know, and we can pull it together for the meeting on twenty-first.
Excellent, thank you.
Absolutely.
Onto select board member reports, and just because the way we're arranged, select person, hide cough.
Oh, so the zoning board of adjustments met and provided a variance to our middle school to step outside the norm for signage so that they could raise up and expand the middle school sign, provide more information for visiting teams, and make the middle school more visible from Route Nine as people were trying to find the property, since the school really is not visible until you pass it in one of the directions. So that was approved, and a variance was provided to build a home on a non-conforming lot on Longshore Drive. I'm sorry, Dan, I'd disappoint you, but.
ABC will need to, uh, school board will need to, um, and let's see, I missed the joint meeting, but you've heard the report of, of the joint meeting from the school board. Transporta, or transfer station meeting had to be canceled for Tracy's, or for Aaron's, had some personal issues he had to solve, and so we're going to meet in a couple of weeks.
Excellent. And then we'll move on to select person, Capio.
All right, planning board, we met last week. Probably the thing that would be of most interest is that the planning board did approve the Young Road subdivision in its new iteration, which has three dry boycotts instead of the ten plus and has one less house in the subdivision. We also had some preliminary consultations. The building, the ridge at Green Hill, the commercial area really right next to us, wants to redo some of their parking, they want to move it from the side and put it in the front and add more parking spaces. I think the board is favorable to that, but that'll come as a formal proposal. And then bending Brook pavement, there was a mistake made on the paving, I think an honest mistake, but the board will be asking them to add another half inch of pavement to that, and that we will look at taking over that pavement in five years rather than the usual two-year timeframe to make sure that that's going to hold up.
Excellent.
And that's it.
Excellent, thank you. Vice Chair Gibson.
Not too much to report. Energy Committee met last, I think, is putting together a survey, hopefully available for the November elections, and available online and such to get feedback from residents as to what they would like to see the Energy Committee focusing their efforts on. So eager to get that out and get information back, and we'll encourage in participation there. The last Conservation Committee meeting was canceled. The next Energy Committee meeting is next week on the seventeenth, and this Thursday, the tenth, the Library Building Committee has their meeting. It's an important meeting where the general construction manager will be presenting all of the, the bids for the subcontracting for the project. They'll be providing recommendations, and the committee will be voting or selecting the, the orders.
And on that note, this is the key to the library. We closed today.
Hey!
And we, we now own the library. So Jim has already gone out and pulled the political signs off the property.
Jim Anderson.
Jim Anderson, yeah, yeah, Jim, Jim. Facility manager Jim. So yes, we are now the proud owners of four twenty-six Kalif Highway.
Excited.
Good job.
Uh, I don't have much. Fall Fest is the twenty-six, twelve to four. Connor's covered a lot of my subcommittees already earlier on, so that's all I have to share.
Apple picking.
Oh, apple picking for the employees is the.
And volunteers?
And volunteers, that's on the thirteenth.
Thirteenth from one to four at Butternut Farm. RSVP deadline was today. If you still want to go, you just can't be promised a burger or a donut, but you can get apples.
Excellent. So we're going to go to public comment. We have anybody in studio maybe that might want to come up and bark on the mic?
Rick Walker, Fire Chief, I just wanted to let the five of you know, we extended an offer to an individual about a week ago, I guess, for administrative assistant. She's gone through the background process. Her tentative start date is October twenty-first. I'll be working with the facilities manager to see if we can get some renovations done. One of the things that we want to do is, right now, the front door only services the police department. When they did the renovations a few years ago, a wall got put up, which ultimately put a closet on our side of the building. We're looking to take that wall out, put a door back in there so that the visiting public will come into the front lobby and either go to the police department or to the fire department. So, but we're excited about the fact that we had about a dozen applicants for the job. We narrowed it down to four. Three of them showed up and interviewed, and we had what I believe to be a very qualified candidate that we selected, and we're looking forward to getting her on board, so.
Excellent, exciting news.
Thanks.
Hey, I don't see anybody else in studio or online, so we're going to go ahead and close public comment. We do have a request for non-public reputation.
Motion to enter non-public question pursuant to RSA nine one dash A, colon three, two, purpose of reputation.
Second. Hi, Tracy.
Hard copy.
Hi. Sakoshai.
Capelloi.
Select person, Capio, I sent you a separate link. If you want to switch over to that one, it should be the top of your inbox.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, thanks.